Hello, we're all back. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular town council meeting, town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Monday, October 15th, 2018. Where has the year gone? Pledge of Allegiance, let's see here. Evelyn, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have to have laryngitis to do the pledge?
Oh, is that a problem? I didn't realize that. Okay, so, let's see here. Public announcements, well, I normally don't say much of anything, but I understand we've got some kind of event coming up Wednesday and Thursday of this week. That's usually a good time, I believe it's Taste of Cave Creek, and we all should go and enjoy ourselves, should be a good one. That's about all I've got. Call to the public? No forms.
Town manager?
The little one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you, yeah, go ahead, step up. You're supposed to fill out a form, but that's all right. I know, we just let you come in, but...
Okay, it's red. There it goes. I am Ellen Olsonver, AKA Miss Ellie, as you guys know me. 5995 East Cielo Run, north. Mayor and council, I am here to talk to you about Wild West Days, which is actually going to happen. I'm super excited. I've been working really hard with all the businesses in town, and I've gotten a lot of support. It has literally come down to me doing it with a bunch of volunteers that signed up on the CCIBB, so we are ready to go. It's an abbreviated version, just because of the shortness of time and because nobody else was going to do it, I sort of stepped up to the plate and I sort of got thrust into this position. So I've talked to all the business owners, and we have some really exciting plans. I would love to tell you about them, but I'm short on time. So I would like to come to the next meeting and ask for your support as a town. I know you've been helping with Wild West Days forever, and it's just me. And I have an awesome 501(c)(3) that's helping us this year. It's the McKenna Youth Foundation, and they are going to help sponsor us, so we have a 501(c)(3). And I am basically just asking for a little bit of financial support and then help with the town stuff as far as the traffic study, barricades, all the safety issues, basically, things that would be attached to closing Cartwright Road so that we don't have families running amongst parked cars. And I'm trying to keep it to the bare minimum of intrusion as far as traffic and stuff like that. I have already talked to Kerry and Adam, and we are, we have a plan. I need to turn in my special use permit, and I'm just asking for your help. So I'm going to keep moving forward until the next meeting, but I would like to say that I've had some fantastic volunteers step up to help. Of course, Harold and the Chip, they've just thrown all the money that we need at it. We're going to have some of the similar things that we've had in the past. There is no parade. I'm just going to say that. Instead, we're going to have a 100-horse ride, which is going to show the support of all the horse people in Cave Creek, and that's going to be awesome. We're looking for a great big picture on Brenner's Hill, something historic that shows that Cave Creek is still a Wild West town. If you have any questions, I would love to answer them, doing the best I can. Thanks.
All right. Thank you for stepping up. I'm not supposed to respond. She didn't say nothing nasty to me. I can't talk. Town manager report.
Mayor, members of council, we have been working with Ms. Ellie. We did meet with her about the 100-horse ride and providing escort across the public rights of way at various locations in a safe manner, and she has application for closing Jack Cartwright Pass and the special event permit, so she's working through that process. So we'll see what else we can do to help them out. So this week, of course, is Taste of Cave Creek Week. It's Wednesday and Thursday, 5 to 9. We hope everyone comes out. It's a packed venue. We are literally squeezing in with a horse shed to make everybody fit because it's a sold-out event. It's busy for staff. The finance department is working to set up all the trash drawers and preparing the payment devices, getting those activated, the Groupon's, et cetera. That takes some time, getting that set up. Tuesday begins the facility setup with the fencing. All of our staff or field staff, utility workers are on-site with the setup of the pop-up tents, tables, chairs. There's delivery of the garbage cans and the APS trash boxes that come. Dumpsters get delivered, delivery of the refrigerated trailer, ice, wine, and the restaurants and vendors begin to set up their booze. By Wednesday, the vendors and restaurants continue their setup. There will be three television appearances to promote the Taste of Cave Creek. And then Wednesday and Thursday, the offices at Town Hall will close a little early at 4:00, so all the staff can be on-site to work the event. So I think I've covered everything, but we hope everyone comes out. It looks like the weather will be decent. It's certainly cooler this year, so we're looking forward to that. So I think that's it.
Very good, thank you. Moving on, action item consent agenda approval of September 17th, 2018, regular council meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve consent?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Ayes clearly have it, 6-0. General agenda items, council discussion, appointment of one citizen to fill the vacancy on the planning commission, placed on the agenda by the town manager.
Mayor, members of council, we have a vacancy due to the death of Dick Frye, and at this time, we have one applicant who has applied, Mr. Dr. Dan Baxley. And if you would like to talk with him or interview him, he is here to discuss this, his application with you, and it's on the agenda for you to make the appointment, should you choose.
Thank you. Council have any questions of the applicant?
Make a motion.
Oh, well, actually, we've got public comment here first.
Public comment.
Yeah, we have any, okay, now go ahead. She's shaking her head, no, there's nobody filled out a form.
Motion to appoint one citizen to the filled vacancy on the planning commission with a term of the, oops, oops, December 31st, 2020, till 2020, Mr. Dan Baxley.
Second.
And I don't believe we need to even discuss it, do we? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Baxley, welcome back to the planning commission. Did you want to talk to us? It's too late now. You're already done. It's kind of like, kind of like when you go out and see your shadow and you have like a couple of years of public service coming up.
We had to rush it because I didn't want him to change his mind.
Uh-oh. He's holding up a paper. Did you want to talk to us? Okay, we're good. We'll move on to agenda item number two then. Congratulations, sir. Council discussion, possible approval of purchase of a new 2019 Freightliner 4,000-gallon water truck under state contract number ADSP 015-093361, placed on the agenda by the town engineer in Public Works.
Hal Maron is available to discuss the purchase, and if you have any questions, Tyler Therm is here as well.
Before you start, is that one still available?
Yes, sir.
Mayor and council, we would like to move, or we'd like you to consider the purchase of a new water truck for the town. It is in the budget. We brought it in, Tyler was able to get it a couple thousand dollars under budget. Our current water truck, while it's been of great service to us, it doesn't like to go left, so it wouldn't make a good stock car. It has a problem with the water system, which is sort of the point of having a 4,000-gallon water truck. It would need about $45,000 in rework, which we don't think is a good investment on a 20-year-old vehicle. And it has a carriage problem, and also, the guys don't really like it because the AC doesn't work at all. Other than that, it's a great running piece of equipment. So we've gone out, we put it in the budget for last year. It has been, it is in the budget, at $138,000, I believe, in the budget item. We're bringing it in for $135,000 and change, so like I said, a couple thousand savings. We were asked the question if we would keep the old water truck and as much as it, I know Tyler has a real feel and appreciation for it, but we're going to let it go. And we could either trade it in for about maybe $10,000, or we could put it on auction, maybe get 15 to 20. So we're going to probably put it out at auction, see if we can get some other sucker, I mean, some other person to gracefully take it from us. So if you have any questions on the matter, you have the information in front of you. It's a, I believe it's a Freightliner. Is that the Freightliner?
I have a question, or perhaps comment. I just want you to reaffirm my math. So if you're paying $135,000, and if we were not to get it, not vote for it, we'd have to put $50,000 in the existing one.
That's to just fix the water, that's just to fix the...
The tank.
The tank. That doesn't fix the leaky air brakes or the left turning problem.
But my point is that if it lasts 15 years, and after getting $10,000 when you sell it or trade in, it would cost less than $5,000 per year.
Correct.
Probably about $4,500. And for a good craftsman, to be good at their job, they need the right tools and equipment. This certainly falls under equipment, so...
I certainly agree with you, Vice Mayor Silva.
It makes, it's eminent sense.
Councilwoman Wright?
And I suggest that you sell the other one before hot weather returns.
Yes, I agree.
I had a couple of questions, please.
Yes, yes, Councilwoman.
I noticed here that you say $5,000 annually will be needed to be invested in the current water truck until replaced. Is that just per year, $5,000 a year?
That's just the normal, yes, that's normal, the normal maintenance to try and keep a well-used piece of equipment going.
Going, okay. But am I correct, it only has 55,000 miles on it?
Yes, 55. If I were trying to sell it to you as a used car salesman, I said, it only has 55,000 miles on it, but I don't want to tell you what that 55,000 miles was over. Because when you're talking about a vehicle that is probably carrying just 25,000 pounds of water, and the vehicle itself is rather large, it has been not necessarily driven from church, to church on Sundays. It's gone over some pretty rugged terrain, and it has some, you know, it has some structural problems associated with it. So it does, it's, it's not something that you would necessarily has been had loving care and easily driven.
Okay, another question. What was the maintenance cost for the last three years on that vehicle, on that truck?
I would have to, I would have to check that, but I believe it's been right around, I would check, but it's going to be at least, at least $4,000 a year that it's been...
Year, just like...
Do you know, Tyler?
Yeah, it's been about $5,000.
Pretty close, okay.
Yeah.
And that's on the generous side.
Thank you.
Are the baffles gone in the tank?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Is this, it's like when you, when you turn to speak to somebody, you've got a glass full of water and you leave half of it out the other side?
Only this doesn't...
Except none of it goes anywhere, it just makes the load shift while you're driving.
Yes.
Is that why it doesn't turn left, or is it...
There's also an issue with the, I think it's the, I don't know if it's a rack and pinion on that big of a truck, but basically, it won't allow you to turn full left anymore.
So it really doesn't?
You can get about, you can get about a half a turn left.
We are a right-center community. I mean, not necessarily... It has side sprayers, right?
Yes, sir.
That's important.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions from council? There is public comment on this.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
We have nobody? We're back to council for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the expenditure of $135,553.11 to purchase a 2019 Freightliner 4,000-gallon water truck under state contract number ADSP 015-093361.
Second.
Vice Mayor, comments?
I've made my comments.
Okay. Councilwoman?
No, it just makes sense. Totally in support.
Councilwoman Smith?
I've seen it.
We've known for quite a while that this would be coming along, and it's certainly reached the point where it's a necessity.
Yeah, I think. Councilwoman Wright?
It's, it makes sense, okay. It just seems like a lot of money for a vehicle like this, but if we use it that much and it goes over rough terrain, then it's worth it.
Yeah, it's not like your poor Jeep, but...
No, my Jeep's got 150,000 miles on it.
Yeah, you've done well. All right, this is a financial, so roll, please.
Councilwoman McGuire?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wright?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silva?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clancy?
Yes.
Mayor Bunn?
Yes. 6-0, motion carries. Agenda item number three, council discussion, possible approval of first reading of ordinance number 2018-02, amending the town of Cave Creek subdivision code, section 2.3, entitled Preliminary Platte, placed on the agenda by the town attorney.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you know, this has been a work in progress, as we have attempted implementing your town code, the provisions of your water policy that was adopted over a year ago. The goal of the water policy was to correct actions in the past when your town has been issuing will-serv letters, sort of in an unconstrained manner. Typically, most governments require a developer to bring water. Typically, the threshold requirements for bringing that water is driven by state statute when ADWR requires a 100-year assured water supply for subdivisions. That's what this does. It has been helpful, as we've gotten input from a variety of parties. The Planning and Zoning Commission came in with some recommendations. The folks who helped us, helped you solve the problem with the standby, Stanpipe came and said, the way we've drafted it might capture the domestic water improvement district in being a subdivision, so we fixed that. And then finally, in recent days, your staff has been encountering numerous requests for will-serv letters from property owners in the Desert Hills service area. Property owners who are not subdividing, but are taking advantage of the statute that says, that says you don't have to subdivide if you have three or less parcels, some often called wildcat subdivisions. What that has done is, it's been a run on the bank, and there's been a number of requests for will-serv letters. And so the most recent change appears in section B5 on page, I want to get it right here, is 61 of your packet. And what this does is, it says, only residential lots, sole pursuant to a final plat. Remember, I said, state law requires folks who subdivide and have a final plat to bring, demonstrate an assured water supply for 100 years. In the past, your staff has been writing will-serv letters, saying you would be the source. This gives your staff the protection and gives you and your constituents the guidance that your town code says, only those who have a plat will be given a will-serv letter. If you have a single lot, for example, out in Desert Hills, you will not be getting a will-serv letter. And so that is the new language that appears new since the last time we briefed you. All the other language is the same, to include the recommendations by the commission and to include the recommendations by the folks who helped us, helped you solve the standby, standby problem, so that dwids aren't a subdivision, we recommend the first read.
Questions from council? Looks like we might have an understanding. There is public comment on this agenda item. We have no, okay, we're back to council for a motion.
A motion to give first reading to ordinance number 02018-02, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the town of Cave Creek subdivision code, section 2.3, entitled Preliminary Platte.
Second.
Sounds like a fix.
Thanks to our council, Mr. Simmons, thank you.
And the commission, and the dwid folks, and you. I mean, I've had, in a minute, we're going to talk about some recommendations that you all made. You're going to make some tonight that have made us even better, but I thank you for...
Councilwoman Wright?
Great.
All right, those in, Vice Mayor, you've got nothing to add? I'm surprised.
No, I'm happy with this.
It's Mr. Councilwoman Smith.
I'm so content with this.
All right, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes clearly have it. Agenda item number four, council discussion, possible approval of first read of the ordinance number 2018-03, amending the town of Cave Creek zoning code, section 12.3, entitled Applications, General Provisions, and section 12.5, entitled Review Criteria, placed on the agenda by the town attorney. And I believe this is where we're going to discuss some other issues.
Yes, Vice Mayor. Yes. Again, this is an example of an iterative process that is learned from experience. For example, we were encountering requests for meters that were divided up, so it'd always be less than an inch. This, the subdivision, the one you just passed, triggers the duty to bring water for subdivision plats. Well, there could be commercial enterprises, car washes, that have significant use of water, and they too need to bring water. And simply because you have it in your water policy doesn't give it the force of law. This does to site plans what we did for the subdivision ordinance, and it says, if you have greater than an inch, or you break up your meter to be greater than an inch, you can either bring water yourself, or it does give you some flexibility that you, as a town council, could approve a development agreement. For example, a developer comes to you and says, I'm willing to do XYZ for the town. If you're willing to accept water from me in the future, you could agree to that in a development agreement. An example of how this has evolved for the better, both councilmember Wright and councilmember McGuire have said in the past that perhaps we should add the language, a development agreement approved by the town council in its sole discretion, and we will add that, add that recommendation after this first read. In addition, before the meeting tonight, I spoke with some members of your staff. They're suggesting that this identical language might be more appropriately inserted into chapter 45 of your town code on water. It would not change any of the significance of the language. Well, at the second read, I'd like to chow with them about, about doing that. My thought was that a site plan is the counterpart to a plat, that's why I put it in the site plan. But they're the folks who have to make this work on a day-in and day-out basis, and if they think it'd be better in the chapter, in chapter 52 on water, let me talk to them. It'll be the identical language that we're reading tonight, with one, with one word added, approved by the town council in its sole discretion, either to be inserted into 12.3 and 12.5 of the zoning code, or into chapter 52, Water, of your town code, and that'll be on the second read.
Questions from council? Okay, we, do we have any, any public comment on this one? No forms filled out. All right, we're back to council for a motion.
Move. Go ahead. Counsel, okay. Motion to give first reading to the ordinance number 02018-03, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the town of Cave Creek zoning code, section 12.3, entitled Application, General Provisions, and section 12.5, entitled Review Criteria. Approval by the, Mr. Sims, would you give me what the, approval by the town council at its sole discretion? Is that the right wording?
Approved by the town council in its sole discretion.
Okay.
After the word council, in its sole discretion.
That would be the...
All right, do we, I'll second that. Councilwoman Wright?
I'm just excited about this. This is wonderful.
Yeah, give us some, add some more tools to the toolbox that help protect the community. Any other comments from council? We're good. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes clearly have it, 6-0. Agenda item number five, council discussion, approval, reading of ordinance number 2018-05, amending the town of Cave Creek code, section 30.07, Oath of Office, section 30.21, Vice Mayor, section 30.35, meetings, section 30.38, agenda, section 35.01, ballots, election procedures, voting districts, and section 35.23, sample ballots, and publicity pamphlets, arguments and declared to be a public record by resolution number 2018-19, placed on the agenda by the town attorney.
Mr. Mayor and council, this was, your code had not caught up with statute, and in fact, the consolidated election law required all the elections to be in the fall, your code, code had you all elected in March, and so we weren't quite necessarily legal. And so this then causes your code to conform with the consolidated elections with fall elections. But then the benefit of having a manager who is also a clerk, she then started poking holes and found any number of problems in your code, which we've now fixed.
Thank you. Questions from council? All right, we actually have public comment on this one? Any, no? Actually, we just did that, didn't we? All right, we need...
You don't want a second reading, you want a...
This is the second reading?
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Everybody's good with it. Have we made a motion? I was, I was cross-eyed reading around this thing here when we were doing that, it kind of just came by, but we have...
Okay, motion to give a second...
There you go.
Sorry. Motion to give a second reading to ordinance number 02018-5, an ordinance of the mayor and the council of town of Cave Creek, Arizona, adopting and making a part of the Cave Creek town code that certain documents entitled section 30.07, Oath of Office, and section 30, period 21, Vice Mayor, and section 30.35, Meetings, and section 30, 38, Agendas, and section 35.01, Ballots, Election Procedures, Voting Districts, and section 35.23, Sample Ballots, and Publicity Pamphlets, Arguments and Declaration to be a Public Record by
Do we have a second, council?
Second.
All those, discussion? Comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes clearly have it. Moving on to agenda item number six. I'm going to try and sit back so I don't end up cross-eyed reading this one. Council discussion and first reading of ordinance number 2018-07, amending the official town of Cave Creek zoning map by changing the underlying zoning of parcels 211-46-035A to 211-46-036, 211-46-022A, and 211-46-006, describing Exhibit 1 and depicting Exhibit 2 from a desert rural DR-43 zone to a general commercial GC zone, placed on the agenda by the planning department.
That's right.
I'm assuming one of you gentlemen are going to talk to us about this.
One of us is, and Luke saved me from speaking on the previous agenda item, he said it was too soon, so. You're not the only one who's squirrely-eyed right now. I've been up since midnight for some reason, traveling, so. And my story isn't even the worst compared to Hal. The mayor, members of council, this is a request to rezone four parcels totaling about nine acres at the west of the southwest corner of Cave Creek and Carefree. This is a request to change from desert rural DR-43 to general commercial. The underlying land use is mixed use in the town's general plan. That was done under an action called Area 18, which encompassed 18 parcels, you may remember. That was about 10 years ago, I believe. So the applicant, Stuart Jean, on behalf of Park West, is here to make his request. They have answered the questions as part of the town's requirement. Mr. Jean actually held two public meetings prior to the required public hearing by the planning commission, noticing everybody within a half mile of the property for a rezoned request. So I'll answer any questions you may have.
Council questions? Councilman Smith?
I noticed on the, the plans that we reviewed, there's no, nothing that goes below the property area. I was wondering if there's going to be an ability to drive down and exit on Olson Road? Or is it...
Councilman Smith?
Or did I go to the wrong one?
No, you will see additional information. I should have pointed out that there's a, another case that concurred with this for the site plan.
I opened to the wrong one, I'm sorry.
Correct. And the zoning case is a little more generic.
No questions on this one.
All right, there. Do we want the developer to come up and talk to us?
Probably do.
Mr. Jean, would you like to, would you like to add anything? He's, he's shrugging his shoulders and... He's shrugging his shoulders and appearing to not really. Just come up and say hello.
I'm Stuart Jean. I'm one of the principals of Park West Development. This is a joint venture between myself and Kisho Construction. I think with Luke and Ian, we've been through the wringer three or four times. They've worked us over pretty good. And I think we're pretty much ready to go. I'd be happy to answer any questions about anything, ingress, egress, score footage, whatever it might be.
Doesn't look like the council's in an inquisitive mood tonight.
No, this is wonderful.
At least on -- well, you don't know, we hadn't voted yet.
Remember, I'm from the good old days. It used to be standing room only in here.
Yeah, there is that. All right, no questions. Council, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, wait, the vice mayor woke up.
Just curiosity, how, I read somewhere in there, your goal is speed to get, because you've got two lanes for ordering, and you only have --
That's not him.
No, it is Dutch Brothers.
No, that's not him.
See, you're wrong, too. I'm going back to sleep.
You need some Dutch Brothers.
Actually, I believe I was right in my previous question.
He led me astray.
What we're talking about is what used to be called the Pearson Properties, right?
Correct.
Okay. My question is, I know that there is egress that's going to go from a stoplight at 53rd Street.
Right.
The other egress that I would like to see is where you can go to the south and exit on Olson Road. Or is that going to be precluded by the way that the two developments are designed?
It's existing.
Doesn't Barbie Lane go through to 53rd?
Yes, it does.
It does. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? All right, thank you, sir. There is public comment on this one. Do we have any forms on this one? We have no forms on this one. We're back to council for a motion, please.
I'll do it, please.
Councilwoman Wright?
Thank you. Motion to give second reading to ordinance 02018-07, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the official town of Cave Creek zoning map by changing the underlying zoning of parcels 211-46-035A, capital A, 211-46-036, 211-46-022, capital A, and 211-46-006, described in exhibit one and depicted in exhibit two, from desert rural zone to general commercial, general commercial zone.
And just to clarify, it's first reading.
It is first.
First reading.
That's my fault, sorry.
All right, I'll second that. Councilwoman Wright?
Thank you.
Comments?
I'm just very excited about this and looking forward to seeing it come to fruition.
Me too. Anyone else? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes clearly have it. So let's move on to number --
See, he doesn't need to say anything. It worked.
We're going to move on to number seven, it looks like. Council discussion, approval of site plan SPR-18-03, Park West Site Plan for a new commercial development within a general commercial zone at the southeast corner of North 53rd Street and East Carefree Highway, placed on the agenda by the planning department down at Cave Creek.
Would like to see it fast.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is the concurrent case of the site plan. The applicant will give a presentation. I'll just like to summarize a little bit. This is for a commercial development, retail development. There are some drive-throughs shown on the property. Those are allowed by right and general commercial zone. And the applicant will address, as I believe it was Councilman Smith, address the possible traffic signal at 53rd Street. Also, there are issues of the undisturbed and landscape requirements from the town. Mr. Jean will address that. Those matters need to be addressed before the second reading, at least bringing a contract to the town, showing that those aspects of the ordinance have been met. With that, I'll defer to the applicant.
Putting up these pretty things up there.
Do you see that all?
We gave us a great big one of those in our packet here. Do y'all want to do a presentation, or we just want to? One of you can come up and tell us all about this.
I don't know how we can get everybody involved here. I think the questions are probably, let me just take this down so when we need to, we'll move another one up, okay?
Okay.
I apologize. Can you?
Okay, this is the site plan that you just, we were discussing. Basically, to orient everyone, this is Carefree Highway here. This is Cave Creek Road, and this is Barbie Lane across here with 53rd going down, which will go all the way down the back and then comes around Dave Long's Auto Zone down there at the light at Olson. The addition, primary ingress and egress is this, we're going to be responsible for installing a traffic signal at 53rd and Carefree. This will be a deceleration lane here that will provide traffic flow into the center and traffic flow out of the center with a right-hand movement. On Carefree Highway, when we did the Starbucks across the street, we constructed a deceleration and left-turn lane into 53rd to go to that project. We'll be responsible for putting this deceleration lane for a left turn at the signal into 53rd with primary access coming off of 53rd right here. On this side of the property, we've worked with Kent Row at the Four Sons, which is the Chevron station, and we've agreed to provide access through this particular piece of property, which is the current kind of drainage and landscaped area south of this. Y'all recently approved a new car wash facility that's going to go in this general area with the Chevron station. This little existing car wash will be torn out, and so that will flow around like that. Also, down here at Olson, we're going to modify this intersection a little bit to facilitate delivery trucks making a right turn and the Phil State Trucks and access coming in here. There will be no right turn northbound out of Olson. Also, as it exists today here on the ingress and egress through the Chevron property, there's, this will be a right turn out only, and we'll be constructing a median in here with a left turn that will allow the traffic to come through there. I think that pretty much explains the basic fundamentals of the traffic flow itself. The project --
You're on.
Okay. The project is, has a complete traffic analysis prepared by 2YK, and I think both Luke and Ian have been through that top to bottom, and I think we're conforming with everything that we need to do in terms of the general traffic flow around the project. Basically, I think it's pretty well-known now, this is the Sprouts Grocery Store. These are general shops. This is just a pad, and this will be shops out here, a pad, and a pad. It's pretty much a typical neighborhood shopping center. The elevations are pretty much, well, they're not pretty much, they'll be exactly those colors, and that would be the front of the, this would be the grocery store in here, here, shop buildings here, and there, that's a little close-up of that. These are the palette of colors that we've submitted, and that will be the actual, you know, what it's supposed to look like, and it'll be pretty darn close to that when we get it up.
You have a question?
No questions. Just excited.
Thank you.
Yeah? Questions, anyone? You said the magic word there in your presentation.
I suspect I don't know what it is, so.
Yeah, well, it's definitely your rendering there says signage, but you, on the top of the building, but you said something different, and I think that's why there's not any questions here.
Okay. All right.
Okay, there is public comment on this, I believe. Nope? Was that a hearing? It says public hearing here, so the hearing was, hearing's open? Hearing is closed. We're back to council for a motion, please.
I'd like to do it, please.
We were fighting over it.
Motion to approve case number SPR-18-03, Park West Site Plan for a new commercial development within a general commercial zone.
Second.
I kind of thought the second was going to come from that. Councilwoman Wright, do you have any comments?
This is, we're very excited. Thank you.
Councilman McGuire?
Mr. Jean has been doing a number of developments, specifically over on Carefree Highway, and they are attractive and an asset to the town.
I'm excited. I can't wait either. Okay, all those in favor of their motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I didn't think there's going to be any of those. Motion passes six to nothing. Moving on to agenda item, wow, number eight already. Council discussion, approval of SPR-18-02, Dutch Brothers Site Plan for one commercial building with associated drive-up window totaling approximately 900 square feet of floor area with an additional 1,200 square feet of outdoor seating area within a general commercial GC zone. Did I get ahead of it? Oh, Luke, Mr. Cosman.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Case number SPR-1802, Dutch Brothers Site Plan Review. The applicant is Nathan Cottrell on behalf of CEG Applied Services. The property is located at the southwest corner of North Cave Creek Road and East Olson Road. The property was actually annexed into the town a few years ago. At the time, it was unincorporated county. It was Zone C-2. At the time of annexation, the town, per state statute, adopted a comparable zoning district of general commercial for that piece when it was annexed in. But that property was always considered part of the Tractor Supply Company, part of their overall commercial center development plan. It was used in their landscaped and undisturbed calculations for the entire site to make up really the bulk of that development requirement of landscaped and undisturbed. The, as you've stated, Mayor, the application is for a 900-square-foot building with a 1,200-square-foot outdoor seating area. I believe the vice mayor has a question about a double-loaded drive-through window. It's --
Well, my question was, entry is a double lane and exit is a single lane. So I think, from what I read in the information, Dutch, I've never been in a Dutch Brothers, but it prides itself in quality, coffee, quick in and out. So this, the double lane will prevent any backup going on to perhaps Olson Road?
That's the idea, yes. And we've also worked with the applicant in massaging the site plan, getting a little bit wider, dry aisles in between the parking areas as well, making sure that those are up to our requirements for width and access. So really, you know, if council has any other questions at this time, I'd be happy to answer those.
I just had one other one. It might have, I might have read it in here somewhere. Right now, I don't recollect it. Is it the outdoor seating going to be, I assume, covered?
That is correct. The elevations show a covered kind of outdoor seating.
Right, right. That's still the plan.
Right.
Councilman McGuire?
Having seen other Dutch Brothers, do we have an indication of what the color scheme is going to be?
It's not chartreuse, right?
Most of them are. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Did the applicant want to say anything to us, or he want to hide in the corner? Oh, there he is.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Nathan Cottrell with CEG Applied Sciences. I'll keep it short, because Luke has always, does a great job of this. The, this site, it's, if you see in the narrative there, it's a very small building, 900 square feet, 1,200 square foot patio. It's a coffee shop. Most of the customers are drive-through oriented, so that's the reason we have a double lane there. A lot of the business model includes one of the employees standing out there, taking orders on iPads and things like that, to make sure that those double lanes are properly served, quickly fed through, and, you know, it's intended for, you know, people coming from Cave Creek, going down, get the coffee in the morning, get on the way back. I mean, it's a perfect location. The site itself, 2.4 acres, 78% of that, I just did the math sitting here, 78% of that will still be vegetated. 67% is undisturbed natural area, 11% additional landscaping. The rest will be the building and the small parking lot. So it's going to be a beautiful site with lots of landscaping that meets the town standards and looks great. Our drive-through access will be off of Olson there. I think it'll even work well with the Park West development there. The patio covered seating, of course, shaded for the afternoon sun, and like the exhibit they just showed, that color scheme, a blue, painted metal, there's some brown. I always forget it, the brown wood accents on it that will give it the right feel that everybody wants, backlit signage, everything to make it look good. And I have, that's it, it's pretty simple.
I've got a question. I drive by Dutch Brothers and all, what kind of people drink coffee all day long? I mean, I see lines at these things all the time.
It's really good coffee, if you try it. Especially if you really need to stay awake, you know, the caffeine in there, I mean, it gets you going.
Well, I would make a comment. I had a car full of teens who made me get off on Glendale and go to that one, and it wasn't coffee. You make some kind of drink with all kinds of things in it.
Absolutely.
So they're the next group. These kids aren't driving yet, but give them two more years, and it's going to change things.
Yes, the smoothies and the iced teas.
Getting out of high school, or high school's not that far away.
Yes.
All right, any questions?
I have a question. It has nothing to do with your site plan at all, but never having been in a Dutch Brothers, do you burn your coffee beans like Starbucks, or are they medium roast?
I can't comment on that, but my gut feeling is that if you're just comparing the normal coffee, a cup of regular black coffee to coffee, I like the Dutch Brothers better than the Starbucks, so.
Any other questions from council? Thank you, sir. There is, let's see, what was this one? Was this a, oh, this is another hearing. Let's open the hearing. No, it wasn't.
Yeah, it is. It is.
Oh, yeah, it is a hearing. Hearing is open. Do we have any forms? Hearing is closed. We're back to council for a motion, please.
Okay, a motion to move town case SPR-18-02, Dutch Brothers Site Plan for one commercial building with an associated drive-up window totaling approximately 900 square feet of floor area with an additional 1,200 square feet of outdoor seating area within a general commercial zone, subject to conditions contained in exhibit C.
Second.
All right, Councilman?
I think I kind of made my statement. It's, it is great coffee, and the kids are going to love it, so thanks for coming.
Councilman McGuire?
Having looked on the net and seen what other Dutch Brothers coffee kiosks look like, I'm very pleased that you are conforming to the flavor of Cave Creek, not just coffee, but the colors. Thank you. I was going to show some ideas of what I'd like it to be, and I think what you've done is very close to what I was going to ask for.
Councilwoman Wright? Councilwoman Wright, comment?
Just looking forward to having you in our community. Thank you.
All right, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes clearly have it, six-zero. Moving on to agenda item number three. Council discussion, first reading of ordinance number 2018-06, amending the official Town of Cave Creek zoning map by changing the underlying zoning of a portion of parcels I think this is typo here. That's got to be 216-06-173, 216-06-174, and 216-06-175, described in exhibit one and depicted in exhibit two, from a single-family residential R-35 zone to Town Core Commercial TCC zone, placed on the agenda by the planning department, Town of Cave Creek.
Mayor, members of council, Mayor, you said it all. This is a request to rezone a portion of four parcels at the base of Brenner's Hill, basically south of Viola Lane, which is south of Outlaws, current name of that establishment, from R-35 to Town Core Commercial. The intent of this rezone is to rezone the property to commercial for the use of public parking and to address the drainage issues of that general area. The applicant, Pete Spitler, is here to address any questions he might have. This request to rezone is in conformance with the general plan, the Town Core Plan, which had already been changed to commercial.
All right. I guess we need the applicant to come up and stand there so we can throw darts at him.
Throw away. Pete Spitler. I've, I'm here to answer any questions you may have regarding it. I think Ian kind of explained it well. It is just the, the northern portions of four of the residential parcels that make up approximately 1.5 acres. It varies in depth from about 50 feet, I think, to 120 feet, to the, to the eastern end, which is directly adjacent to the Buffalo Chip, and the primary use will be parking, and we'll be coming back in front of the planning commission and the council as we work through the site plan for that purpose.
Mr. Spitler, there's currently a chain link, there's currently a chain-linked fence there. I'm assuming that the, the property actually goes beyond, well beyond where that chain-linked fence is at this point in time. Is that, because there's, because what you've shown in the, in the diagram doesn't, doesn't look like what's actually...
Correct. That is just the, that would be the eastern portion. The previous owner had kind of chain-linked that off. There were people parking on it, and he was concerned about some of the liability associated with that.
So how many parking places are you ultimately looking at?
We can lay out approximately 157.
Okay. And that'll alleviate some of the issues on Wednesdays and Fridays and other, other times when there's events going on?
Exactly, exactly.
And Mayor, members of council, to clarify, the site plan for the improvement of that would actually just be a staff review. It's, parking isn't allowed use in our ordinance.
So we're done? Once, once it's, if we approve this, we're done tonight?
Correct.
Until we park there on Wednesday and Friday night. Council, questions?
Please. I beat you this time.
Oh, okay.
Councilwoman Wright?
If you don't mind. I've just, I noticed, Mr. Spitler, that the planning commission, and I will quote, asked you if you, if there would be any building on these parcels, and your answer was never say never, but it would be quite a challenge with the infrastructure. And my question to you is, would you be willing to put a condition on this, that this would always be parking, that it would not turn into a commercial business on this land?
I have no problem doing it. I think the only discussion that we ever had was if there was going to be a potential parking structure itself. We don't have any intention at this point. And I know there was discussion with the planning, with the planning department as well as the planning commission, that in the future, if it ever became prudent to do something like that, I would like to come back in front of the planning commission as well as the council and consider that, if it were to be prudent.
Okay, thank you.
So I can't say no structures, so...
So you would, will be willing to put a condition on that this would remain as parking?
Parking.
Thank you.
And, Council, we can actually do conditional zoning, as I understand.
The statute allows that, and it would be a stipulation, and, and so that would be, it wouldn't be conditional. You'd be saying you are issuing, you're authorizing this rezoning, subject to that stipulation. The way the statute works, that if it violates, it reverts back, and it's not a good solution. So I just think it's a stipulation to the zoning, and I would like to chat with Ian about Prop 207, if we can talk about that offline.
Okay.
Vice Mayor, you had a question?
I had the same one Councilwoman Wright had, which was answered. And I guess this would be for Mr. Sims. Would it be proper to add to the, perhaps, motion that the property, as approved, the site plan as approved, is limited for use for parking only, with the possibility of a parking structure, be it a place to, if you charge, to pay money or control in and out? Would that be...
Well, it's actually zoning, not a site plan, so...
Yeah, well, I know, but...
You, Mr. Spitler, has been, he's been so easy to work with on a number of issues. If he's willing to agree to that, we can actually do it, but I don't know if you're willing to agree to it.
Well, I have one question. In the event, say, the property was sold to the Buffalo Chip. I mean, obviously Larry would be a, the first one in line for something like that, and if he wanted to do a structure there, he would be prohibited from doing that, correct? If there were to be a stipulation on it?
Probably, yeah.
Well, let's see if the council will go for stipulation for a parking structure as an approved.
That, that's, that's why I'm asking the question. And I don't know if he's, I don't know if you're agreeing to it. You have to, he's, if you, you're, you're welcome to do that, but we, but this is, he needs to agree.
Yeah, and we, we look at the, look at the parking structure at the, at the, at the library, and that's not offensive at all. I think, and that's a low spot down there. I think it would probably not be an issue.
I think from also, I mean, Ian, we've had this discussion, just the setbacks that are required from the residential side.
Yeah, you're right.
I mean, and, I mean, there's virtually no commercial thing of any, any consequence that could be built there. Now, Larry's pretty creative on what he does.
That's what we've got to be careful of.
And I guess, I guess that would be my only concern on putting a stipulation on it. Now, I don't know if you can limit that, but...
Could a stipulation, Mr. Sims, be as long, this stipulation was in place as long as he owned this property?
Certainly, and then whenever, I mean, what I'm saying is, again, I think your zoning code allows some uses, and it may, it may be broader than parking, and what your council was saying is, before they agree to the zoning, they'd like an understanding from you, that you'd stipulate there would only be parking. You then raised the, the issue of a potential new buyer. Well, could you agree to, provide, as long as you own, it would only be used for parking? Could you agree to that?
Or if it's consolidated into other parcels?
No, what do you mean?
If it's consolidated, if Larry were to purchase and consolidate it...
Then you wouldn't own. So I, what I'm saying is, I think that's a reasonable compromise. He's saying that, so as long as you own, you're willing to limit the use, but you're saying that if indeed there's a transfer of ownership, that stipulation would expire, and the uses would be permitted by the zoning code.
By the Town Core.
Is that okay?
That's, that's fine.
I think that meets your needs. Okay.
There'd be some real challenges to do anything other than parking down there, just because of the nature, the setbacks, and the long, skinny look of the product, property.
It'd come back to planning and so on.
I have a question.
Councilman McGuire?
If some other structure were to be put in there, wouldn't it come back to us to approve?
Absolutely.
So it doesn't, doesn't matter whether we put the stipulation on or not. I don't see...
I agree.
Any need for a stipulation. Let's, let's not tie his hands behind his back if we don't need to.
Thank you.
All right. I don't think we're going to ask you anything else. There's public hearing on this agenda item. A public hearing is open. Do we have any, public hearing is officially closed. Do we have a motion from council?
Motion to give first reading to ordinance 2018-06, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the Town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the official Town of Cave Creek zoning map by changing the underlying zoning of a portion of parcels 216-06-172, 216-06-173, 216-06-174, and 216-06-175, described in exhibit one and depicted in exhibit two, from a single-family residential R-35 zone to a Town Core Commercial TCC zone. May I add a friendly amendment to that?
Councilman?
Is it what we've discussed? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, basically saying that this would, no commercial would be developed, it would only be parking places. Would that be close to what you had, Vice Mayor?
Old by Mr.
Okay.
So we're going, excuse me, so we're going to put a stipulation on that?
No.
No, I didn't think so.
Unless...
My understanding was that there are...
No, that's what I'm saying. I do want that.
I'm, I'm not agreeing to that.
Yeah.
Well, and, and we can vote on that.
Pardon me?
Could you agree if it was limited to your ownership?
Well, I, I think the fact that if, if it were to be anything, I got to come back in front of the planning commission, I got to come back in front of the council. I really don't want to restrict what can be done. I have no intention of doing anything there, but I don't think it's, it's prudent to restrict it at that point when I have all the regulations and stuff I would have to do.
Particularly if it takes 10 years from now. It's just, yes, you'd have to come back, so that's why I...
But if I can add to that, the stipulation basically means that if you want to do anything else, the zoning reverts back to its original zone.
Well, I'm not agreeing to a stipulation.
Okay, I didn't hear that.
Okay, so basically, we have a motion, do, so we have a motion with, with an added stipulation, so I guess we need a second on that.
Second on the amendment.
Does someone have a second on the amendment? Is there a second on the amendment? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we're back to the original motion as read by Councilwoman Clancy. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, by five to one, motion carries. And it looks like that's our last agenda item for the evening, folks. Appreciate y'all coming. And everybody, come on out on a Wednesday night and Thursday night, enjoy the good food at the Taste of Cave Creek, and look forward to, to seeing y'all there. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some, I'll second.